So, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and for those of you that are in attendance physically tonight for our Randolph County August Board of Commissioners meeting, we welcome you tonight. And for those of you at home or wherever you might be that are observing our meeting by live stream tonight, we welcome you also and want you to feel a part of this meeting. As we say each month now, we hope to get back to some normalcy, but things are a little more normal tonight. I see Dr. Shackelford here with us, who has not been our usual chaplain of these meetings, if you want to say that, as we've gone through this process. We also have Mark Limeberry, Aspera Police Chief with us, the district attorneys here, I see, and Mayor Smith. So, for various items that are on our agenda tonight. So, each one of you, we thank you for your attendance, being a part of this meeting tonight. And we are convened for our August board meeting. With that, I'm going to ask Dr. Shackelford if he will have our invocation tonight. And following that, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. So, will you please stand?
Let us pray. Oh, God, we look around us today and we see that we have right much we need to be praying about fires in the West, destroying lives and property, winds and floods on our own coast, threatening the residents there, a coronavirus that continues to rage, taking thousands and thousands of lives, creating calamity in other ways, in the economy, in jobs, so many other ways. We realize that this is not a time for us to be lacking in prayer. But we also look around and we see some other things. Just this morning, sitting on the back porch drinking coffee, I could hear the sound of the birds chirping, and I saw the flowers blooming. Watching the rains fall and replenish the earth today, I was reminded that you're still on your throne. And as we sang as little children, he's got the whole world in his hands. So, in that, we have our hope. I pray that you'd be with those who are fighting the fires and be with those who are responding to flood damage. I pray that you'd be with those who are frontline workers treating patients with coronavirus and other ailments. Be with our own law enforcement, with our own court system, firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics, people who were given of their own safety in their own town and talent every day to respond to the needs in our community. Sometimes in the smoke and the chaos of this old world, we lose our way. But you told us very clearly that you are the way, the truth, and the life. And by your grace, that's the way we're going to walk. Bless now these leaders who lead over our county's business. Bless this meeting tonight, that your will will be done and all that is done and said. For these things, I pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Shackelford.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. As we get to our business tonight, our first item is a public comment period. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak publicly to this board? Okay. We didn't have anyone to sign up either. All right. Having said that, you have a couple of letters at your place. It's really not a public comment, but it has to do with the questions on a construction site and our building inspector and Jay Dale's response to those. So, I just ask you to, I guess that's part of the record, Al, is it? Or? Yes. So, just ask you, you want to take those with you tonight for reading. All right. Our consent agenda. Anyone have any of those issues? I think all of those have to do with approving minutes from our previous meeting and during our budget process back in the month of June, our last one, and then some budget amendments for this year. Anyone want to take any of those off? I have a motion to approve.
Ms. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Want to have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and the consent agenda is approved. For our new business item tonight, first is a report on our Project Safe Neighborhoods. And I know we have some folks here tonight, Rodney coming forward, or who's going to do the presenting. I know that several of these folks were here tonight relative to this budget, this agenda item, looking forward to the presentation.
Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I'll take off this mask.
Yes, sir.
If y'all can hear me okay.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Matt Martin. I'm the U.S. Attorney for the Middle District of North Carolina, which Randolph County, in addition to being in the heart of North Carolina, is in the heart of our district. I'm the lead federal law enforcement agent or prosecutor, I guess, in this district. When I was before you and along with Mr. Gregson, in November of 2018, we talked about Project Safe Neighborhoods, which is a federal local partnership to try to reduce violent crime. Tonight, we're just going to give you a very quick update. So, since February of 2018, there we go. All right. Randolph has joined a number of other sites across the Middle District, which you see on your map here. We have sites surrounding Randolph to the north and the west, and Randolph has now become a part of this network. You'll hear a little more about the activities that are involved, but there is a significant federal local relationship and a significant federal interest now in partnering with the chief and with others here in town to keep federal crimes down, keep violent crime down. Now, since we started, to be honest with you, y'all have really taken off. And that's because of two people who are sitting here tonight, and they didn't know I was going to say this, but that's because of Andy Gregson, the DA, and Rodney Trogdon, the PSN coordinator that the county has hired. They have taken this extremely seriously because I think they saw some of the storm clouds that were gathering. The pastor talked about some of the fires raging and the floods. Well, there was some violent crime raging in communities near and dear to Randolph County, in High Point, in Greensboro, even in Salisbury, just next door. They've been struggling the last few years with some violent crime. And so, having this in place was important. This slide may look familiar. You saw it in November of 2018, and it pictorially depicts how with Project Safe Neighborhoods, we focus on those who are most violent in all programming, whether it's extremely tough prosecution, whether it's investigation, or whether it's the focus of the helping hand to try to get people to change. All that is focused on the 20% that's causing 80% of the violent crime. Now, just in the year that Mr. Trogdon's been in this position, he's going to tell you more about this. I just want you to see of all the spokes around the hub, I want you to see what we've been up to. You can just see the red circles coming in. So, we've had UNCG help us figure out who is the 20%? What's that profile look like? We've prioritized case investigations, and we've taken over two dozen defendants federally out of Randolph County, which we don't have as many bullets in our gun, and so, two dozen out of Randolph County, one of our 24 counties is a lot. We've aggressively prosecuted. You're going to hear from Mr. Gregson in just a moment. But what I wanted you to, and we've also held a call-in, which is sort of the public face, and in fact, I think at least one of you all attended that. And so, we've really got off to a great start. And I just want to thank you all for the trust and confidence you put in Mr. Gregson and me when we came here trying to convince you this was the right answer. And y'all made an investment, and I just want to thank you for that. And this is meant to show you that we're off to a great start, and I think the future's extremely bright. So, recently, in the course of a gun screening or a case screening, where we have a federal prosecutor, someone to Mr. Gregson's office, a state prosecutor, probation office representatives, and various law enforcement representative, agency representatives, and we're looking at crimes that are happening and trying to decide what should we do with this. And the idea is we're focusing on the crimes, the right crimes and the right criminals to take in federal, or the state's going to focus its resources if it seems to have a better case. Well, there was a state law enforcement officer, a state highway patrolman who's just transferred to this area, and he's been in some other areas across the state. And after the meeting, he looked at our PSN coordinator out of our office, and he said, "This is the best thing I've seen in 20 years of law enforcement. The working together, the intelligence that's getting out on the table between these agencies, how we're working to get the right people, you know, dealt with the right way." And so, I just wanted to compliment you on that, and that's a compliment to Andy and Rodney as well. So, with that, I'm going to sit down and certainly be available after Mr. Gregson and Mr. Trogdon speak, if you have any questions for me.
Is this a question more, I don't know when to ask, but how much of our numbers, if all are affected by some of our more urban areas that'll join us, if that's part of one of your presentations? But I know, in particular, in Guilford and Preside Counties, it's a daily issue.
So, I'd just say, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. There's no question that Greensboro, High Point, Winston-Salem export some of their criminals to Randolph County.
I know that some that we have arrested or some of our drug busts have been people from High Point in particular.
That's correct. Now, let Mr. Gregson come in on that.
Thank you, Andy. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on that before I address all of you, just this evening, a U.S. Attorney and I talked about a case out in the county where 35 guns were stolen in a break-in of a business. We actually caught those individuals trying to sell the guns up in Ohio. We extradited them back. Turns out, they are the prime suspects in a number of breaking and enterings of businesses where guns were stolen. Just talked to the U.S. Attorney and my special assistant U.S. Attorney, they're going to study that case for adoption, where they can probably get them a lot more time than I can in state court. So, that's the kind of, I guess, what you could say, the criminals we're seeing coming into Randolph County, but it's also a good example of how this program is working. So, I just want to echo the U.S. Attorney and thank you for the investment that you've made. It is paying dividends for Randolph County. I want to point out that we had our first call-in. Commissioner Haywood was there. I can't remember if anybody else was. Very impressive. We had 15 serious criminals called in. Unfortunately, one didn't show up, and four have re-offended. That's not unusual, though, given the target audience we were after. All four of the ones that have re-offended, there's an order for arrest out for the one that didn't show up. The other four, two of them have already been indicted, one for habitual felon, one for some very serious criminal offenses, and also, the other two have already been punished. One's in prison and one is awaiting trial. And so, we were true to our promise that we jumped on them really quickly. Keep in mind that those 15 were only the ones that we identified that were on probation or parole that we could force to come to the call-in. We had been working on, I don't know how many, but probably close to 50 more that we are targeting. They're not on probation or parole, so we can't force them to a call-in, but we are working with our federal partners and inter-agency in this county to target them. So, when we get our shot at them, we're going to do our best to take them out of our community, federal or state custody. So, I just want to give you a few reasons why this program is paying dividends. I won't be long. I want to invite questions for all three of us, so I'm going to leave some time for that. Number one, we are sharing information among law enforcement. I really appreciate the chief being here this evening. I have never, in 26 years of being in this county, have never seen the agency sharing information about our troublemakers like we are now. They cannot hide in Ashborough up there from Archdale and vice versa. So, we are all sitting down, talking about these individuals, and quite frankly, we're looking to get charges on them if we can. That has never happened before. To the extent that it is, that is paying big dividends for law enforcement in this county. Number two, we have never had this close of a relationship with the U.S. Attorney's Office. That is a tribute to U.S. Attorney Martin and the Trump administration. Since we started this program, they have taken 24 serious criminals off of our dockets. And we're talking about child pornography production. We're talking about felons possessing guns. We're talking about drug traffickers. We're talking about seriously bad people that we would have had to deal with in the state system. They have adopted those cases. Most of them have been indicted already. They're awaiting trial in federal court or been tried, and I have never seen cooperation like this before. They actually gave me a special assistant U.S. Attorney. She's here today, Ms. Mary Ann Courtney. Unfortunately, the one problem I do have with Mr. Martin is he hired my salsa to be one of his prosecutors, so he kind of stole her from me. So, I had to go out and find another one. So, Mary Ann Courtney has started work with us. She is a very experienced prosecutor in Guilford County before she came to work for me, and she is taking Veronica's place now, going to work every day in Mr. Martin's office and coordinating with us on these federal cases. Very valuable position. So, our relationship with the U.S. Attorney has never been as strong as it is. The third thing that is paying dividends is our officers are now getting training and working together to perfect their cases like we've never had. So, one of the big things that Rodney does, and he's done a great job, is line-up training for these officers that they might not have gotten before. How do you handle a gun? When you come across a gun, you treat it like a murder weapon. We've never done that before. We get touch DNA and all kinds of other evidence. So, there's a lot that's going on behind the scenes. This has been an unqualified success. I just want to thank you again for the investment you made in this program. We could not have done it without Rodney. There's no way that we'd have had the time to run this program, get it up and going, and maintain it. So, I just want to thank you. I appreciate it. I hope you'll continue to do the same in the future. And I guess I would say to the mayor, who I saw here, look out, because we're going to be coming to you asking for a little supplemental money, too. So, everybody has some skin in the game, not just the county commissioners. Thank you. I'll just yield the floor to Rodney.
Thank you, Andy. Rodney?
No disrespect, but I was glad to get that thing off. I'm a big old fat man. I sweat a little bit on them things. Again, I want to echo what these two gentlemen said. Thank you guys. Having been a probation officer for 32 years in this county, I can tell you the success we're having. It's unreal, and that's due to those guys supporting it as well as local law enforcement. In my 32 years, I never had a problem with any law enforcement agency in this county, and I don't to this day, and I hope I never do. So, that's been invaluable. That's one of the reasons we've been able to move as fast as we have. I'm not comparing apples and oranges. There's a program that's been up for three years that has a full-time coordinator. They've had two colleagues. We've been up a little over a year with a part-time coordinator, and we've had our first. I'm not saying that to compare apples and oranges, but I take pride in it. Dr. Stacy Seacrest, who was one of our data partners from UNCG, she spoke at a meeting after our call-in, and she's been doing this for 10 years. And she said, "To be the first time that they ever had one, this is probably the best one she's seen in 10 years to be a first time," or "It did not come across that way, that we were polished, that we were efficient, and we got it done." The only issue was the speakers needed to be a little bit louder, but we're working on that with 911. They're going to improve those because with it roomful like it was, it kind of muffled the sound a little bit. So, nothing major. I've asked for people's good or bad input. I said, "I'm a big boy. If you hurt my feelings, that's fine. I'll get over it, but I want to make it better. I want to continue to progress and do well." The gun screenings that both Andy and Matt have referred to, that's our, I use the example in a presentation where if you have a pool, you know, when you plant that pool, the water gets splashed out. At some point in time, you've got to put water back in it. So, when we review these cases that's happened, these violent offenses that's happened since we've done our, put our pool in, some of the water's splashed out, evidenced by the five folks who've had issues. We've got to put some more folks back in, which will lead us to our next notification. I've still been working during the pandemic. I'm still pushing to, hopefully, depending on how the pandemic goes, is to have another call-in. Hopefully, my hope is, but first of November, because I don't want to get into Thanksgiving. I don't want to get into Christmas as far as holidays goes, so that we can bring some more folks in. Just to give you a quick example of that, one of the guys who scored the most points on the data collection that UNCG did is out on post-release now. And so, we're watching him very closely. We couldn't call him in before because he was in prison. Well, now he's on post-release. He's a 20-year-old male. So, we're looking at, you know, bringing him in when the time comes, if we can get this done. Of course, with the pandemic, we've got to abide by what the governor says and what's best for everybody's health. I put together a memo for you guys, kind of a timeline of where we've been. And if you have any questions, then I'll answer any questions you have with it. But when I put it together, I told Andy Mast, "You know, when you look at it on paper, I've really done a lot." Because sometimes it's just what I do. It's what I've done for my whole working career, is working criminal justice, and I enjoy it. And I've always loved Randolph County, and I want to give back to the county any way I can in a positive way and protect our citizens because I'm one, just like you guys are. So, that's my goal. And that's pretty much what I have. If you guys have any questions for these gentlemen or myself, we'll answer anything that you have.
It was impressive to come that day and to see the representation from community leaders, all kinds of law enforcement, all our municipalities, all levels, the court system, you know, the community college, agencies that can help, you know, these young people if they, or these prisoners, these offenders, if they are willing to take advantage of that. So, I was very, very pleased and impressed with that, especially being, you know, that was the first time.
Yes, ma'am.
And to have all that in one place, that was a lot of firepower, but it was also a lot of people coming together that are interested not just in fighting crime, but in the individuals.
Right.
And perhaps impacting a change in their lives. So, thank you very much to all of you.
I'm just grateful for all of you and our officers in the back here that do this every day. And, you know, what's alarming to me, too, is they keep getting younger.
Yes, sir.
Two 14-year-olds killed this weekend in Winston-Salem, 14-year-olds at 1:00 in the morning. I know y'all know more than we do about what's going on right here in our own county.
Yes, sir.
So, just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All of you.
Ms. Chairman, one thing that's unfortunately for me, has become a little bit more evident to me than, and surprisingly so, I think, is the involvement in human trafficking in Randolph County. And what are you guys seeing as far as a, as a way of how it's going? What's driving, what can be done, what is being done? Because that's one of the things, I think, Ms. Chairman, that kind of gets on the table, so to speak, and a lot of people really doesn't know how much of that's going on.
Yes, sir. Actually, Dare Spicer with the House of Hope, they're actually doing some treatment with the women's shelter. We actually had a team of 13 officers from different law enforcement agencies, including Dare and some of her staff, to go to a federal training in Davidson County, Lexington. Unfortunately, due to COVID, it got postponed and then got canceled. So, we're still doing it. That team is still together. I've kept that group together. We actually had a webinar last Wednesday on some human trafficking from folks in Cabarrus County. Of course, they border Charlotte, and they run into a lot of issues with the big city there in Charlotte. So, we're staying abreast of it, staying in touch with Dare, because they're kind of head of the curve when it comes to treating folks who are victims. A lot of areas don't have that, so I think Randolph County, due to Dare and her staff, is ahead of the curve on that. We obviously do have a case pending that is human trafficking in Randolph County that we're, I'm sure Andy and those guys are working through. So, we're trying to get the training started to be more familiar with it. Just from my line of work as a probation officer, there was a couple of probation officers that are going to be going, because they go to these residences when they check on folks at home a lot. And so, they can see some signs that a normal law enforcement officer or who hasn't had training, or just, you know, anyone in the community might not recognize that there's a sign there that something's going on. So, knowledge is power, and so, that's what we're trying to obtain now and get some training and get some information. But keep a group together. Again, just like the PSN that we do here, we can share that information. We're not working against each other. We're working with each other because we're doing the same people. So, why go against each other when it makes more sense to work together? So, we are indeed in the process of working on it. Now, I don't know if these gentlemen have any more, you know, as far as the trainings and what's coming up in the future, but I know that's what I've been working on through, PSN as a coordinator.
I wonder if that's something that would be beneficial to guidance counselors in our high schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, the city and the county, because they have, you know, these young people. And I'm personally familiar with the case where a guidance counselor was, maybe did not know what was going on, but knew there was something, referred the young person to another agency, and it was, you know, it was discovered that this person, that this person was a victim of human trafficking. So, I just would think if they don't already get that training, that something like that would be helpful. It was very eye-opening to me, what little I've had, was very, it was a big eye-opener to me.
Well, in the same vein, we need to get that done involving the schools, but also, one of the things that Rockingham County has done, and I'm trying to follow up on in Randolph, is the 14 people we brought in, some of them have kids, and some of them are in school. And with the COVID and not being able to go to school full-time, what is their home life like? Do they have the technology at home? What can we do? Because part of the PSN initiative is also prevention. And I think the statistic I saw was if a person is involved in criminal justice system, 50% of their children will be involved in criminal justice system. And that's high. You know, when I first heard that statistic, I thought, "Ah, maybe a third, you know, 30%, something like that." But when they said 50, I said, "If you've got two kids, one of your two kids could end up in the criminal justice system." So, not only that, Ms. Haywood, but we've got to, the human trafficking as well as making sure these kids or some of these folks we've called in are making sure they're getting help as well, so we don't see them five and 10 years down the road in trouble with the law as well.
All right. Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you, those participating, and for those of you that are doing this every day. Thank you so much. Okay. Our next item tonight is OE Enterprises, and I think you will know them better for their work in the sheltered workshop. So, we have new presenters of, well, you've been here before, but part of a, an older program that we've had here in the county, and we thank you and welcome you. So, good, good to have you.
Thank you so much, Chair Frye. And to all of the commissioners, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. We truly appreciate it. My name is Margaret Samuels. I'm the CEO and President of OE Enterprises, and this is Joe Bumbana. He's our Director of Business Development, and we will try not to bore you and get through this quickly, and hopefully, if you have any questions. I do want to start by thanking you so much for your support and for your support in past years for Randolph Vocational Industries. OE started meeting with Randolph Vocational Industries in mid-year last year, and the board and staff of RVI decided to merge with OE at the beginning of this year. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about OE and then talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing in Randolph County, in Ashborough, since the beginning of the year. I just have to warn you that it's a little bit different than we envisioned when we took over in January with what is going on in the world right now. But nonetheless, we've been so incredibly impressed with Randolph County, with the town of Ashborough, and all of the citizens, and your support of individuals with disabilities. And again, there we go. So, we are a community rehab program. We started as a sheltered workshop many, many years ago in Orange County, a group of parents with family members over 45 years ago who had disabilities in the Orange County schools, who really didn't have a place for their family members to go after graduating from high school. So, we began our workshop with, very similar to RVI, with individuals working on contracts within within the facility, which was in the town of Hills, is in the town of Hillsborough, remains in the town of Hillsborough. And gradually, as time progressed, we started looking at different practices, and many of our clients started to work within the community, within Orange County. Just a little bit about our finances, we're an almost $7 million organization with about a little over 40% being the traditional work, very similar to R V I, of working with the M C O, formerly the L M E, in this county, Sand Hills. We have a very good relationship with them in Orange County, it's Cardinal, and in Alamance County, it's Cardinal. About 10% of our agency is private production contracts. Joe is going to talk about those in a little bit and talk about organizations and businesses we're working with in Randolph County. A big part of our programming is what we call our Service Contract Division, that's actually federal contracts with the federal government, that's a set aside, it's called the Ability One Program. And we do janitorial and administrative contracts throughout North Carolina, one in South Carolina. In South Carolina, we clean a Veterans Administration pill processing center. And throughout North Carolina, we clean courthouses, and we also support the National Institute of Environmental Health Services with administrative services. 75% of that staff are individuals with disabilities. Our primary locations that we serve clients in are Alamance, Durham, Orange, and now Randolph County. Last year, we served almost 700 individuals with disabilities and their families, and we point out almost 300, a little under 300, individuals in community employment, where we're actually assisting them on their jobs, whether they work in Walmart, McDonald's, Bojangles. We have individuals that work at Blue Cross Blue Shield, at U N C, and different community sites where they are employed. We work with over 130 different employers throughout the counties that we work in. Here are some pictures of some of our clients that are working at Wendy's, at Chick-fil-A, and then we have one of our clients who works at a retirement center, she's in food service there, supporting retired individuals by bringing them their food and cleaning up an area. Some of this, of course, has looked a little bit different since COVID in March, but we've been able to either support our clients who may have been furloughed or laid off in finding other jobs, or helping them get through until their job has come back, and for some of them, that has happened. We provide facility services, so we provide day programming and activities, but many of our clients within the workshop, in Alamance, in Orange County, and in Randolph, are working on production contracts. Traditionally, in Hillsborough, we had a lot of contracts with the universities, actually to make packets of information, and that lasted us for years and years and years, of course, until most things now are electronic. So we've changed from that a little bit. And then Alamance, which until Randolph was really our bigger production site, and we had a lot of various contracts putting things together, pack and ship business. And Joe's going to talk a little bit about REEM and some of our other contracts here in Randolph. Again, some of this may look familiar to you if you've visited the Ashboro site, and again, I can't say enough about the town of Ashboro as well, allowing us to continue in the building where many of the clients have felt comfortable and safe for many, many years. And our clients and our families have been very welcoming, we were fortunate to keep a lot of the R V I staff, the board helped us so much in transitioning the program over to O E, and so that has really helped in the continuity with the clients. I'm going to turn this over to Joe for just a little bit to talk a little bit about our partnerships and what we do.
Thank you, Margaret. So, as Margaret said, we've developed partnerships. So one of the big ones that we've done, about a year and a half ago, we were approached by the Ability One group that we work with, our central nonprofit called Source America, because we do the service contracts, Industries for the Blind and I F B Solutions, which is in Winston-Salem, has production contracts, they actually produce stuff for the defense contracts and things like that. They were having a hard time finding staff for their, besides their visually impaired staff, they needed other people with vision to do some sewing jobs, so sewing machine operators. So we worked with them for the last year and a half, and we've added 24 people to their staff of about 300 that are people with and without disabilities, working in their facilities, both in Winston-Salem and in Asheville. They also have a facility in Little Rock, Arkansas, we haven't gotten that far yet, we're going to stay within North Carolina for this partnership, but it's been very beneficial to us, but also to them, because it's allowed them to continue to employ more people with disabilities and in an integrated setting, so it's people with and without disabilities working side by side at the machines. When you walk in that building, you can't tell who has a visual impairment unless they have a seeing eye dog, which, that's Margaret's problem when we go visit, is trying to pet the dogs, or an individual with a disability or another individual that's not disabled. So it's an amazing work group, and they're a great opportunity to work with. So we've taken that model, and we have gone back to REEM in Randleman and met with them last year to, because they already had a contract with R V I, but we wanted to see if we could expand it, and we've been able to do that. We now are doing production work in Randolph and also in Burlington in Alamance County. We've approached them, and they've got a new production manager that came down, that from, I believe he was from Maryland, and they worked with other agencies like us in that area to employ people with disabilities in their building. I don't know if you, I'm sure most of you know REEM's adding on like 100,000 square foot distribution center, additional space.
Yes.
So, once that's completed, we're going to go back in and sit down and talk about them bringing in and doing some contract work, and us placing individuals in their facility to work, as well as doing their production work that they need done outside of the facilities, in both of our facilities in Ashboro and in Burlington. So that's, they're very open to that, we've been able to expand the business, like I said, and doing more production work for them, so it's allowed more opportunities for the folks that we serve in both Alamance and in Randolph Counties. We talked service contracts. So Margaret mentioned the service contracts. Go back one, all right, sorry, I can't see that little writing. We do, we've got 11 different contracts, as she mentioned, that's a 75% of those individuals direct care have a disability. We partner with other agencies in North and South Carolina to help these individuals get jobs and be supported on the jobs. We've been doing it for almost 12 years now. We continue to look for more opportunities that, to do that type of work in the communities. We do have partnerships with Orange County Government, where we're doing government buildings, custodial services. We have eight contracts there around the county, community centers, a couple of their corporate type where the county manager resides and things like that. So we're always looking for opportunities like that, we do a great job with custodial services. Anything else? Oh, LabCorp, that's right, LabCorp in Burlington. We have a partnership with them, and we've been doing that for almost 10 years as well. We go in, we have individual disabilities working in their computer receiving area, where they take the computers back from the offices, break them down and recycle them, e-cycling. They also format and get the computers ready to go out to the offices to replace those, they do the printers, and they've been doing that, we've got about 12 individuals that work there, part-time and full-time in that facility, and we would love to expand that, because LabCorp's been a great partner with us as well over these last few years.
Is finding qualified employees a problem?
Finding qualified...
Finding workers that fit your program?
By partnering with the other agencies, Easter Seals, Autism Society, Teach out of U N C, they've got offices in Greensboro as well as in Asheville, and it's been easy to, because we're helping them place their individuals, and we're able to employ them as O E and staff, they're O E employees in the I F B Solutions in Winston-Salem and Asheville. So they're our staff, they get paid benefits, it's a really great partnership, they get to support those individuals and help those individuals get jobs. So it was initially very difficult, but once we got it and showed that we could support them and help those individuals, all I've got to do now is send an email and ask them, hey, I've got an opening, do you have anybody, and I get three or four candidates.
My daughter works with some of those folks at Easter Seals.
Does she?
She works with special needs at one of our local schools, and then she works for Easter Seals also.
And we've partnered with school systems in Orange County, Alamance County, and Durham County, Project Search, and also the PETS program, which is doing pre, let me remember one, pre-employment transition services, I don't work in that area, so sorry about that. But it's been a great program, because we're getting to the middle school and the high school children to help them transition to adult and be ready to work when they get out of school. So that's been very beneficial to us and to the folks that we serve.
Been working with one kid, I think he graduates from one of our high schools this year, and she's had him for about five years.
So is he ready to go to work?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can help him with.
I think so.
So are most clients able to work within their county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And our biggest barrier is still transportation.
I was going to, that was my next question, is what is transportation for those clients that do not have it?
In Forsyth County, it's fairly easy, because there is a bus service that can get folks there. Alamance County, it's a little expensive, I think it's seven bucks one way, six bucks one way, for folks to get to and from work. They will live in Chapel Hill, it's free, but if you live in Chapel Hill and work right across the Durham County line, you have to pay for the bus. So that's always been a biggest, one of our biggest barriers for us is transportation.
What about Randolph County?
How about Arcats?
We do use, yes, sir, we do use that.
I'm sorry. We have a contract with Arcats.
Oh, sir.
Absolutely, and they've been wonderful, and they've been working with one of our staff, Donna, on that, she does a lot of our transportation work. And as far as individuals getting back and forth to our facility here in Randolph, that's been wonderful with Arcats. Individuals who are employed here in Randolph, who we do support for, we are often troubleshooting transportation. So some people figure out how to do it, they make arrangements with different providers of that, some individuals, their family members can drop them off, we do some of the transportation, at least initially, we partner, of course, with Vocational Rehabilitation, who've been a wonderful partner here in Randolph County, and they will help sometimes with resources for individuals to get back and forth. Joe mentioned our school-based programming, that is something, again, we're in talks with in this county with Vocational Rehabilitation. Project Search is an evidence-based model that we use in Durham, Alamance, and Orange, and that's students in high school that are in their last couple of years, that really need some intensive training on employment before they graduate. We work with Duke Hospital in Durham, with the U N C Dental School in Orange County and in Alamance County, it's Alamance Regional Hospital, and we know that V R here is very excited to hear about that, and hopefully, that's something we can expand into. And students do, right before they leave school, do three different internships, typically three different internships in the hospital setting, that can then help them with employment. We have high rates of employment for students that have graduated and gone through that program. Again, with COVID, it's looking a little different, we're working with all of our partners about how that's going to look. Our PRIETS are our transition program for students that starts in their last year of middle school and goes through high school, which is really trying to teach work-based training, workplace readiness, self-advocacy. We've had to move to some online platform for that, we're very fortunate, we have two former North Carolina school teachers who have left the classroom, who've come to work with us, who've developed it and are starting to do some of that online in conjunction with the school districts, and especially what's going to be happening over the next few months. We talked about that, and then here we are at our thank you. So, we, again, just want to say thank you, we had, as I said, a very different vision when we came in in January, that abruptly changed, so we're providing, we've not had to close down, knock wood, in the time that we've taken over, we've adopted a lot of health and safety practices, we have clients coming onsite, we have, we're also providing some telehealth services for those clients that are maybe too high-risk to come onsite, but we've continued to do socially-distanced home visits as well, so that we can make sure that all families and individuals are doing well during this time, because as you know, as we all know, it's a very, it's a high-stress time, especially for individuals with disabilities. So we hope in the future that we'll be able to come back and talk to you about more and more of what we're doing, and I just can't thank you enough for how welcoming Randolph County has been and how much we appreciate it. And we also have some thank you cards from our clients, I hope I can leave those, I wanted to...
Just pass those to our clerk, and she'll distribute those. And we, anybody have any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to thank you for providing those services to our citizens, because it was a situation where, you know, we were concerned that we might lose those services, and I know Sand Hills had worked with R V I and provided some additional funding, that kind of thing, to transition over, so we appreciate the services that you brought, you know, that's very varied and widespread, so we appreciate what you're doing, because otherwise, that might have been something that we may not have been able to continue without your support, so we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And the staff and board of Randolph Vocational Industries are just fantastic, and I think what you're referencing isn't an unusual thing that occurs in our industry. We were just very lucky, I became the CEO about six years ago, the previous executive director, president, had been there for 30 years, and she had a great vision of seeing that you, to survive doing these services, had to seek out as many different areas as possible, so, but thank you for that, and we hope to bring Randolph along with that.
Yeah, I think it's revitalized our whole program here, and we're glad to have you.
They are wonderful, the clients, the families, everybody has just been so wonderful, thank you.
Look forward to working with you, going forward.
I want to say thank you, too, for the families and the clients, I'm close to some of the families there, served by the services there, and I know they were awfully nervous during transition and how this is going to look, but I know, talking to them, they've been really pleased and comforted that everything is still going well, and I know it's a difficult time to operate in, but...
Thank you so much.
But we're glad you're here.
Thank you, we appreciate it, we love Randolph County, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
See you next time.
See you next time, bye-bye.
Okay, next is a public hearing for G M Art Products LLC, a building reuse grant. Crystal Geddes is here, and Kevin Franklin from our E D C, who will present the program or the project, and then we'll have time for public comment, if any.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having me.
Tonight, I want to talk to you a little bit about a company I've been working with, M G Art Products LLC. This is a company that's a subsidiary company that was developed from Jerry's Artarama. Jerry's Artarama is one of the largest art supply companies that supply art supplies worldwide, they ship worldwide. They're headquartered in Raleigh, and they have retail stores in Wake County and Guilford County. So of recent, they've had such a high demand in art supplies, they're unable to keep up with the demand. So they've taken this opportunity to create a manufacturing company, a subsidiary of their own, to manufacture frames and package paint supplies, primarily to support their own company, Jerry's Artarama, but eventually will expand out to other markets as well. So they have identified a building in Trinity a couple of months ago, approximately 40,000 square foot, and they are under contract right now, and they're in the process of doing their due diligence on the building. If all goes well, we look to hopefully close in sometime in August for them. So knowing that the building needed some improvements and some upgrades, we contacted them, we went before the North Carolina Department of Commerce with an application for the Rural Building Reuse Grant. We've had a public hearing with the City of Trinity, who is the applicant on this, and they have qualified for $100,000 grant, which requires a 5% match from local... and they have qualified for $100,000 grant, which requires a 5% match from local, from the local government. Trinity has approved that 5% match with the request that the county help them make that, half of that match of 2,500. So the full amount would be 5,000, 2,500 from each local government. The City of Trinity, as the applicant, they're completely responsible for that, so the county would not be. We're looking at probably in excess of $500,000 in upgrades for the the building. We won't know that until they finish their due diligence. But it has been, they have been approved and qualified through the state, and they should be awarded towards the end of this month for that grant. So we are asking, they are looking at creating approximately 22 jobs within that first two years and in excess of that over a five-year period up into the 40s. So it's a great opportunity for the City of Trinity to put the building back into use and to create some new jobs for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would just like to point out for the board, on the the cover letter that we have, you still have the, it's at the 150,000.
Yes, sir.
But you told us, you told me last week at the EDC meeting, so it is 100, but I just, the resolution, the resolution is correct.
The resolution is correct.
At 100,000 and 2,500, our our one-half of the $5,000 match.
We were going for the 150, but after they went through the process in Commerce, they did qualify for the 100,000, and that came in after the the ad went in.
I just note that if anyone has a copy of this agenda or has seen this, that the resolution is correct as as presented. So any questions of Crystal?
It is in there. City of Trinity is the actual grant applicant.
I'm sorry?
The City of Trinity is the actual grant applicant, so they're responsible.
Yes, and that we have had the public hearing there, and they are in in agreement and in person of that.
Just a little out of curiosity, I see the average wage is almost 40,000, which is well above.
It's well above the the county average wage, and they do provide the benefits that are necessary to qualify for the the grant. It's a good company.
Usually not the case.
That's right.
Right. It's a good project.
Yes.
They're they're established, so. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, we will open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Relative to this request. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this request? For or against? Hearing none, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we come back to the board for your action. And as I said, the resolution notes it's a $100,000 building reuse grant with a match requirement of 5,000, which we divide with the City of Trinity, so it's a $2,500 match. I would make a motion that we approve the grant.
I'll second.
All right. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. That's, this is a good project and we hope to see you again real soon. Well, you're going to be on for later tonight on another issue. Okay, right. Okay. Okay, Hal, next is our CARES Act expenditure budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The federal government's provided the Corona's Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. That's called the CARES, and it's to help provide resources needed to address COVID-19 pandemic issues. Through the CARES Act in May of 2020, the General Assembly allocated $150 million for relief fund to counties. $2,587,000 was allocated to Randolph County. In July, the state received additional federal CARES funding. This raised Randolph County's allocation to $5,375,790. Of this total, the state legislation requires that 25% be allocated to municipalities, which is $1,343,948. The Safe Neighborhoods was talking about there's the coordination between our law enforcement agencies in in Randolph County, and and our district attorney was saying that he'd never seen that type of cooperation. We've been real fortunate in county government with our municipalities to have the cooperation and the the support of the county and our municipalities on just about every issue that that we've talked about during the COVID crisis. On July the 15th, we had a Zoom conference meeting communicating this CARES funding that was that was held. We met with the mayors and the city managers and their finance officers. Commissioner Chairman Frye and Vice Chairman Allen, our finance officer, Will Massey, our public health director, Susan Hayes, our wellness administrator, Sam Varner, and myself were also on this call as we discussed with the municipalities, the potential of this funding and how, what some of the restrictions are. Although the legislation requires that 25% of the funds be allocated to the municipalities, it also requires that county government be, has final responsibility and liability to ensure that the funds allocated to municipalities are being used specifically for COVID-19 purposes. As a result, the municipalities are going to send their related invoices to our county finance office and after review, to ensure compliance, the invoices will be paid by the county from the municipal funding allocations. The following, and and I provided you a listing, I'm not going to read out that, but it's a listing of all our municipalities in Randolph County and and the amount of the money that they will they will receive for COVID-related expenses that was provided through the CARES Act. It's based on their population using the same system that we use for sales tax. Ashboro, Archdale, Trinity are the largest recipients with Randleman and Liberty and Ramsure in in that order. I was surprised that Staley receives more than Seagrove, but that's because the population of Staley is actually twice that what Seagrove is. So that that's where those numbers came from. What I wanted to do, just very briefly, is is give you a an outline of the process that the county's using in determining the best use of of these funds. And on March, going back to March 16th, and that's when the world really really began to change, Chairman Frye declared a local state of emergency due to issues created by the pandemic. And this declaration activated the county's crisis management team. Randolph County Crisis Management Team was previously established to provide tactical direction, enabling Randolph County's overall response and recovery efforts during the disruptive crisis. The crisis management team works closely with our already-established Kent Randolph County Business Continuity Team, which the Board of Commissioners endorsed and established procedures for that. And and I want to emphasize the importance of that business continuity process that we have in Randolph County because when the pandemic hit, it allowed us to to incorporate our crisis management team and use the full resources that we have in Randolph County on on dealing with the pandemic and and how we want to approach that. The crisis management team has reviewed the department concerns and is making specific recommendations on the use of the $4,31,842 COVID relief funds available to the county. These funds will be used to cover, and I'm going to mention briefly specifics, but they'll be used to cover payroll reimbursement expenses incurred by our public safety employees that were directly impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. Public safety employees, almost all of Randolph County are its first responders, your county government. Almost all are first responders, and and our public safety includes emergency services and public health and law enforcement and and Department of Social Services and other agencies too. So we have a huge amount of our employees that are being devoted and diverted toward coronavirus activities. We're looking at testing, additional testing opportunities in Randolph County, along with the personal protective equipment that we need and our public building vehicle sanitation. These recommendations also, and I'll mention that briefly more specifically in just a second, is to enable us to hire employees, additional employees, to help us manage the challenges that we have before us as a result of the pandemic. Keep in mind now that the money expires now, and of course, everything changes, and this could very well change. But that money expires in December 2020. The following is a breakdown of initial COVID-related expenditures that's been approved by our crisis management team. In some instances, we have initiated these projects to to begin almost immediately. And I've asked the public health directors here, Susan Hayes and and Philip Cheek, the supervisor of our detention center, is also here to answer any questions the board may have in detail. But the first use of these funds, the first category, was the need for the public health department to begin a media campaign using radio, newspapers, billboards, Facebook, and Google Ads to begin with to get information out to the public about this coronavirus and what they need to do to protect themselves. That's will begin this month. We also approved additional public health, community COVID-19 testing locations. And and that is in the process of being developed in August. The first one would be located here in Ashboro, which is a hotspot for, in this central part of Randolph County. There'll be another special site in in the Archdale-Trinity area, moving out toward Ramsure and Liberty. There's some testing opportunities there that are also going to be looked at. But but the key there is to expand our testing locations, particularly for those populations that don't have access to a doctor or don't have access to insurance. Our detention center, we have, we've using a body scanner there that we never had before. This allows a reduction in close contact with the prisoners coming in. And we've also began a program, and I believe Philip Cheek told me we're the first county to do that. We're testing all the inmates that come into the Randolph County Detention Center. And I think it's a real measure of the work being done by our, by Philip Cheek and and the the staff of the detention center, our our medical advisors, the public health department, that has maintained our inmate population without a mass outbreak down there. So far, I think we've only had three that were caught as they were coming into the facility. I believe only one of those tested positive. But the key there, they were identified as they came into the jail. They were not put in the full population to allow for that spread. So our our staff from the top of the county through, in all our different areas are responding and trying to catch this coronavirus possibility before it gets into, it spreads. The in, the testing, we would like, we're using this COVID money for that. It is expensive. It's $100 inmate coming in. You can, if we do 10, 10 inmates a year, that could be 365,000 a year. We don't know if it's 10. It may be a little less, may be a little bit more. But the key to that, it gives us the capability of not doing all that we can. And I can, I knock on wood all day. Every time I'm saying something, I'm knocking on wood. But it gives us the capability, doing all within our power, to try to avert a a mass issue of contamination down at this 200-and-some-bed facility that we have. Screen, personnel. We need critically personnel, additional personnel, using this COVID money to help us deal specifically with issues within the county government. The public health department. Two additional public health nurses that would be specifically assigned to COVID-related duties. These would be two additional staff that would be paid for through this COVID money. Court, our courthouse, we need three additional part-time employees, two for the front and one for the side. That's to do all that we can within our power to make sure that the virus does not get within our courthouse as much as we can. The detention center, there's a need for a full-time sergeant position to coordinate full-time the COVID-related activities at the detention center. And Philip Cheek explained the need for the sergeant is the hierarchy in the jail and the need for how people report to who at what level. But this person would be devoted specifically to COVID issues in our detention center.
How these jobs.
Sir?
Under current procedures or or laws, funding laws, will expire on December 31st?
Yes, yes.
So these folks are going to know that.
They all know.
The job will end in December 31st.
It is is paid for with this money, and as of now, it's supposed to expire in December. At the county office building, we have a screener, a full-time screener there. When you come into the county office building, that that not only checks your temperature, but makes sure that you have a mask on and where and that where you're going. At social services, we needed two additional cleaning people to, when clients come in, the area's cleaned as others come in. We need additional screening equipment and sanitizing equipment. I've got that listed for you here. And down to like emergency services, all of you have been to our emergency operating, emergency operating center. That's where you have emergency services and the public health department. It's been operating there since the 1st of March, and we need additional telephones in that EOC for for the staff that's there. That 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 funding would take up about 30% of the allocation on on personnel and equipment that we need in testing to address issues. The remainder of the funding that the county would receive, the county finance officer and myself are recommending, that's about 70%, that that be applied toward payroll reimbursement to the county on our staff, such as the public health nurses and law enforcement and and other agencies that are being diverted from their normal duties to work full-time on the COVID emergency. That amounts to about $2.8, $2,800,000. And Mr. Chairman, I have the health director here, Susan Hayes. I have Major Cheek here with the detention center if there were any specific questions. But I thought this, I know we meet every week as a crisis management team to go over all this too, but I thought it would be good to touch base with you at this meeting to let you know the direction that we're following. And Finance Officer Will Massey has the appropriate budget amendments to make on this.
I'd just like to make a comment about something I I don't see here, and that's the health educators. They may have been hired before this, but there were additional health educators that were hired that are fluent in Spanish, and those health educators have not only worked with our citizens, but they have also worked with our our businesses and industries. And it's my understanding from this morning that they have set up a virtual training for the businesses that will help, that they can use to show their employees so that their employees will understand more about safety precautions and things that they can do. And that's important because when you have your workforce that gets COVID, then you don't have your workforce. It, you know, it eats into those, into the work hours. So that's very important, and I I I think that was money well spent.
Yes. One other thing, I think we need to make sure, those people that are listening out out in.
Yeah.
Out in the public. You've got this money coming in, a lot of people.
You've got this money coming in, a lot of people, that's a lot of money. Yeah, it is. And there's a lot of things you're looking to use for it. And money is there to spend until December 31st. What if you don't spend it all? That's what public needs to know. What if you don't spend it all?
It goes back.
It goes back to the federal government.
That's what I want, that's what I want.
As of now.
I want the people to hear that if, whatever you're spending on these purposes, first of all, the county is responsible for it. Whatever the town spends and whatever the county spends, and you have to account for that to the federal government, because that's where it's coming from. Secondly, if you don't spend, whatever you don't spend, it don't stay here for us to use for whatever. It's going to go back. And people need to understand that.
And we'll get to that a little later. That also applies to the money that was sent to us for Randolph Hospital, COVID-19-related expenses. And that money cannot be forwarded to another hospital.
That's right.
It only applies to Randolph Health, and any money not spent goes back to the state.
Good evening, Commissioners. The First Budget Amendment has to do with the main 5.7 million that the county has received in CARES money. It's been distributed over a couple of different weeks. But the hospital money was mentioned, that's outside of the 5.7. So the first thing to consider is how much was spent through June 30th of 2020. It was about $1.3 million, leaving about $4 million left. So that's, the goal here for this First Budget Amendment is to get the budget updated for what's left to be spent. That does include the 1.3 that's being allocated to the municipalities. So when we adopted our budget at the beginning of the year, we, all we had at the time was the original distribution. So the amendment that's before you tonight is to bring it up to the $4 million that we do have left in this money, in the special revenue fund that we have set aside for that. So that's Budget Amendment Number One. I'll mention Budget Amendment Number Two, and you can decide whether to do those together or separately. House Bill 1023 also allocated $2.5 million for COVID-related costs for Randolph Hospital, Randolph Health. That has to be reported to NC Pro, which is part of the Office of State Budget Management, on the same plans as the main pot of money. And so we're going to put that in the same special revenue fund and track that in that fund as well too. So that would be recognizing this 2.5 would be Budget Amendment Number Two.
I would mention, Max, that is sort of long points that you brought out. On the first, the first funding that we got, the first round of funding, the $2,587,509, when we got 2.0, a little less than 2.6 million, Guilford County got $93 million. I don't know what they got out of the second go-round. But they got $93 million when we got $2,587.
Yep, their allocation was directly from the federal government.
That went straight from the federal government, to Guilford, Metzenburg, and Wake because of population.
The second distribution came out of what the state was providing to all the other counties that weren't in the federal legislation. So I don't know that they got anymore.
Any questions? I know you've seen these numbers before, but any questions anybody has? Any comments you want to make? Are we going to take up the hospitals, the $2.5 million for Randolph Hospital, or hold that separate? You have a Budget Amendment here for that too.
You can decide whether to do it together or separately.
I would say, and we did get a written clarification on that money from the state, from the Chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, that that money could not go to a successor hospital. It only applies to whatever Randolph spends. And then any money that's left is returned to the state. Okay. We have, we have these budget amendments. We can take them individually, or you've had time to peruse these?
Mr. Chairman, I think we'll probably just take them individually, just to break them apart.
All right.
For simplicity.
The, the first, the First Budget Amendment is the one with the 2021 budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number?
Right, I, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Budget Amendment for the coronavirus relief fund allocation as presented in the agenda packet.
Okay.
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Kidd. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion, the Budget Amendment is approved. The next Budget Amendment then would be the one regarding the funds for Randolph Hospital, the $2,500,000.
I make a motion that we approve the Budget Amendment for the coronavirus relief fund allocation for Randolph Health.
All right, do I have a second to that motion? I'll second, Commissioner. Now, further discussion or questions? Again, everyone understands the rules regarding the use of these funds. All right, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the Budget Amendment for the hospital funds is approved. Okay. That concludes the discussions, unless anyone has anything left on the virus, the funding, the CARES Act funds. Okay, then Hal, do you have an update? I don't have anything. I will say our annual conference is going to be next week. Let's see, I believe that's right.
This week.
This week.
Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, and it is virtual. So there's a schedule out there and different programs for you to follow if you want to. So it's our first attempt at doing this, so we'll see how it works. They might get to like it and we do it again, I don't know.
It's cheap.
That's right.
It's cheap, yeah.
Exactly. All right, we are going to have a closed session. Mr. Allen, do you have those?
I think I got it here. Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter to closed session pursuant to Othrona statute 143-318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to location expansion of industries or other business in the area served by the public body, including agreement of tenant list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, and to discuss competitive healthcare by or on behalf of Randolph Health.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second to the motion. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and we go into closed session. I want to say, and I go ahead for the members of the press, the public present and by screaming, we, rather than have you wait, we're going to officially set a call meeting, joint meeting, closed session of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners and the Ashboro City Council.
Just a moment. Sorry. It wasn't me. It was Sarah, no.
And the Ashboro City Council on August the 13th at 6:00. The place for that will be decided, and that'll be a part of the official announcement. But that will be the only official action that we take when we come out of our closed session tonight. So I'm going to tell you that now, so you don't have to linger. And that will be to discuss matters related to Randolph Hospital. Okay?
That's the 13th.
All right, thank all of you for being here, and we hope to see you in person. Thank you for your participation tonight. Thank you.
Was that the 13th, Sarah?
Yeah, he said 13.
That's six.
I would say so, yeah.
Everything government does is that's six.
We can fit in there, but it's just, we're not supposed to be in there. Well, we could probably, legally, we probably could do it. 10 people, no more than 10 people.
No more than 10.
Martin, the FaceTime, think I can take him in the car? I said, I said.